Okay, so I think we'll get started. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. I now call our February 5th Mayor and City Council Work Session to Order at 6:03 PM. The first item, agenda item for our work session is Resolution Number 3-2025, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, Declaring Support for the Preservation of the Federal Tax Exemption of Municipal Bonds. Councilmember James Cole will share more details about the proposed resolution. And Ms. Dante Moreno, Legislative Manager, Finance Administration, and Intergovernmental Relations at the National League of Cities, will be present to answer any additional questions. Councilmember Cole, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. As I mentioned at our last council meeting last week, municipal bonds are one of the things that are potentially being targeted by Congress as a way to raise funds for the federal budget. The House Ways and Means Committee every year lists out different items that they could save or increase revenues through. One of them is municipal bonds. I think they can get another $250 billion to the federal budget by removing the tax exempt status. As it was mentioned, I serve on the Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations Committee for the National League of Cities. That committee has put out a draft resolution that you see before you tonight. Just saying that we want to get ahead of Congress. They haven't drafted anything yet, but we want to give this to our entire Maryland delegation in Congress so that they know that, look, we're against this. We're encouraging other cities around the country to also pass this same resolution as well to give to their delegations. This is not the first time this has happened. National League of Cities has been a big promoter for municipalities across the country. Every time Congress looks at this, they rally support. They remove this from the items and we get to keep our municipal bond status. Everyone should have received information sent out by the clerk that was directly from National League of Cities. There was a study that was put together, including information specific to our District 4, for congressional district, about what municipal bonds are actually doing in our district. I have asked Director Saylor to also work on numbers that are more specific for Laurel. She's working with some of her people in Annapolis to come up with that number. Hopefully, we'll have that by the next Mayor and Council meeting. And then, as the President mentioned, I did invite Ms. Dante Moreno from National League of Cities Legislative Advocacy to help us answer any questions tonight. So I am available and look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And I thank you also, Councilman Cole, for bringing this to the attention of our city council. And certainly municipalities having exemption for our borrowings makes a big difference in the cost of our borrowing, which by implication has a big difference for our residents in terms of what taxes needed to support any debt service costs we have. And it was very helpful to have the information that you sent as well, that this isn't necessarily imminent, but certainly it's in the mix. And us being able to send a preemptive statement to sort of signal that, hey, we don't really want this to even make it into a draft bill, sort of helps us keep that exemption. One item of note that might be interesting to folks too, as I mentioned to Councilman Cole, there's a little bit of a mutually assured destruction in terms of the federal exempts municipal interest, but states also exempt federal interest. So there is a little bit of, if the federal government would try to maneuver to tax, the states could counter by saying, well, hey, we're going to tax US interest now too. So it gives me a little comfort, but I still like this idea. One point of clarification, and perhaps Ms. Moreno would be able to help with this. I know the resolution as drafted refers to a cost savings of basically 2.11 multiplier, basically 211%. And I was trying to sort of get to that number, and I wasn't able to see where it came from. I know in some of the other documents, sort of the cost savings is more around maybe the 50% number. So that was a curiosity on how that's arrived at. And again, I appreciate the help.
I'm happy to take that. Hi, everyone. My name is Dante Moreno. I'm the Legislative Manager and the Tax Lobbyist at the National League of Cities. That number comes from a Government Financial Officers Association study. It's a, they called a primer. It's a chunky 25-page document regardless, but I can make sure that the councilman has that and can send it around. It's sort of just hidden in there.
Okay, that's great. And I don't know if you may know some of the pieces, because again, I know if we're talking about a spread of two percentage points, you know, 20 bips, you know, it's roughly around a 40 to 50% sort of borrowing cost. So this is a huge jump to 211%. So again, I don't know if that's something, it sounds like maybe it's better to look at that reference, or is that something we know off the top here?
It's 210 basis points. But yes, I can make sure you all have that. I know kind of when you get into the nitty gritty, that's, you just want to make sure you're quoting the right information.
Exactly, yep. Just to be able to explain it to others too, if they ask sort of, okay, exactly how does that break down? It'd be helpful to be able to show that to them.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there additional questions regarding this resolution? I do have a question as well. I had the opportunity to take a look and just try to understand this a little bit more. I thank you, Councilmember Cole, and the committee as well, for working on this legislation. It looks like it could positively impact property values, business growth, and just overall quality of life. So I'm really happy for that aspect. The question that I do have is, is there a contingency plan if the exemption is altered or removed at all? Just to ensure that the city is safe in that perspective? That's one question. And yes, just if the policy shifts, just to ensure that we have a backup plan, because then we would face increased costs for projects like roads and utilities and public facilities.
Thank you, Madam President. Dante may be able to help me with this, but currently, if they remove that and it costs us more to borrow, it will eventually impact our tax base. We'll have to raise taxes to cover those additional funds or make cuts somewhere in the budget to cover those additional costs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, for the question. The only thing I can kind of positively add to that is that they would be taking away a tax exemption that has existed for over 100 years to say that there really isn't a contingency plan in place, nor would they likely have a contingency plan. It would be cataclysmic to the market as a whole.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And this additional question that I have, it can be answered via email from our department, or if there's an answer to it now. Just understanding, and also for the residents to understand, what, how much of Laurel's current or future infrastructure would depend on these municipal bonds?
Madam President, I believe that is a number that Ms. Saylor is working on. We don't have it ready tonight, but we should have it by Monday at the next scheduled meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Are there any additional questions from the council members or comments? Please proceed, Councilwoman Johnson.
Looking for a raise hand button, but mine works. Just real quick, I guess, next step. So I guess we're presenting this. Is there anything else that we would need to do? Or what's the, are there any next steps?
So this is a resolution. It'll have to go through two public hearings. Once we adopt the resolution, then we would sign it, and it would get sent to our congressional delegation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, hearing no additional questions or comments from the council, if the council has no objections, this item will be placed on the agenda for an introduction and first public hearing at our Monday, February 10th, virtual regular Mayor and City Council Meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Councilmember Cole and Ms. Dante Moreno. Next, we have Agenda Item Number 3, Ordinance Number 2038, which I will read into the record in its entirety. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, to amend Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.1, Purpose, Section 6-2, Applicability, Section 6-3, Definitions, Article 2, Section 6-4, The Board of Election Supervisors and Election Judges, Appointments, Section 6-5, Powers and Duties of the Board of Election Supervisors, Section 6-6, Compensation and Oaths of Board of Election Supervisors. I'm assuming that's Article 3. Voters, Section 6-7, Voters List, Article 4, Candidates for Public Office, Section 6-9, Nominations and Certificates of Candidates' Seat, Section 6-10, Qualifications for Candidates for Public Office, Section 6-11, Acceptance of Nominations for Public Office, Section 6-12, Candidates to Comply with Laws and Regulations, Section 6-13, Election of Public Officials to be Nonpartisan, Article 5, Conduct of Elections, Section 6-14, Establishment of Ward Election Districts, Section 6-15, Election Day, Section 6-16, Electioneering Activities, Section 6-17, Conduct at Polling Places, Section 6-18, Challengers and Watchers, Section 6-19, Campaign Materials, Section 6-20, Canvas of Election, Section 6-21, Returns, Section 6-22, Certification of Results, Section 6-23, Recounts, Article 6, Fair Campaign Finance Act, Section 6-24, Distribution of Summary of Election Laws, Section 6-25, Appointment of Campaign Treasurer, Candidate Joining Ticket or Slate, Section 6-26, Contributions and Expenditures of Pass Through Treasurer, Section 6-27, Books, Records, and Receipts of Treasurer, Section 6-28, Contributions of Candidate, Section 6-29, Limits of Contributions, Section 6-30, Expenditures by Treasurer, Section 6-31, Election Reports to Be Filed by Treasurer, Section 6-32, Requirements for Filing of Reports by Successful Candidate, Section 6-33, Maintenance of Reports, Article 5, Violations of Election Laws, and Applicable Penalties, Section 6-34, Prohibited Conduct, Section 6-35, Penalties for Certain Prohibited Conduct, and Providing an Effective Date. For today, we have Madam Clerk, Sarah Green, Mr. Bruce Marcus, Attorney for the Board of Election Supervisors, and Ms. Sidney Patterson. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So the, after the last election, there were some issues that were discovered or found during the last election. And the Board of Election Supervisors met numerous times. And with the help of Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson and myself, went through both the Charter and the Code to try to correct or eliminate some of the confusion with what was already in the Charter and the Code. We're trying, you know, trying to get this finished before the next election. And these basically to the Charter, or the ordinance and the Charter Amendment reflect those changes that were proposed by the Board. And so if there's any other questions about it, you know, I asked Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson to briefly go over the substantive changes, and then we can ask for questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, is this the time for us to comment?
Here, I'm mute, Madam President.
Oh, thank you, absolutely. If you would like to proceed, and then if we have questions, then we can go one by one, if you don't mind. In addition, if there are any questions that need to go forward to close session, these will be noted and saved until the end, and then we will proceed properly. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that, we have not had the privilege of meeting individually. My name's Bruce Marcus. Sidney Patterson is my law partner. And we have, over the years, been privileged to represent the city in any number of election matters. Let me first begin by noting our compliments to Ms. Green for her oversight in this process. She has done yeoman's task in preparing the materials for tonight and working on drafts, all of which endures to the benefit of the city, both from a fiscal standpoint as well as a substantive standpoint. I am absolutely certain, sitting here this evening, that you all have read these materials, cover to cover, word by word, punctuation point by punctuation point, and are totally familiar with everything that is contained in this. So let me, let me just tell you that we've been involved in election work for more than 30, 35 years. And what we're looking at here is a rather comprehensive set of changes. I don't purport to go through each and every one of them, but rather to sort of give you a 50,000-foot view of what the details are. Most of what has happened in these drafts are the changes in the law that we have seen, both emanating from federal election law changes as well as local law. The, we know that one of the things that has changed is we were all used to seeing absentee ballots. We all became familiar with what were called provisional ballots. And for those of you that have paid attention to how the law has changed, provisional ballots were kind of a way to have elections move along smartly where people came to the polls, had registration problems or issues, voter lists and things like that. And the provisional ballot allowed the election officials on Election Day to move people through the lines of voters in an effort not to bog down the process and later go back and determine whether or not any particular voter was properly qualified to exercise his or her franchise. So that has changed dramatically. And we now do vote by mail. We have early voting. We have a number of other ways that people have access to the polls and to exercise their franchise. And so there have been a lot of changes that have been made to adapt and adopt those changes to the city of Laurel. So what I would like to do is to sort of walk you through the materials instead of me just being flatly facetious about what you know, what you don't know. The good part about this process is that all of you are used to seeing legislation in the way that legislative changes and amendments are documented in materials. So to the extent that we're looking here at the Ordinance 2038, this is Chapter 6, having to do with elections. And what we've done here is, in many instances, sort of cleaned up and modernized the existing code in order to adapt the changes in the system we use to vote. So if I can invite your attention first to Page 2, I am not intending on going through every single page unless all of you decide that that's what you want to do for the next couple of days. And so I'm going to try to just sort of give you a rough idea. So obviously, one of the things that happens, and is very, very important to any election code or series of statutes, definitions are important because they help everybody to understand when a word or phrase is used in a statute to have a precise definition, everybody sort of understands what is meant. And that way, there should not be any interpretation. There should not be any question as to what is intended. So on Page 3, the first one that we come to, which is important for everyone to note, is a change in nomenclature. And the nomenclature went from a campaign committee, and we will later see, to political committee. There are different labels that are given depending on what system we're talking about as to how it is, how a campaign committee is described. Some places refer to it as a campaign finance unit, and other places are political committees or campaign committees. And what we've settled on here is political committee. So you'll see on Page 3 the removal of the definition under campaign committee, and that'll later show up in the materials under political committee. The canvas of an election is something that is confusing in some instances, because people hear that and not quite sure what is referred to in a canvas. Essentially, the canvas of an election is the counting of ballots. And so the canvas is conducted after the votes are all cast and the machines opened and ballots counted and verified. So when we see the word canvas, it is the process of actually counting votes and making sure that the votes that are there are properly perceived by the local election officials. We made a change here in, again, in nomenclature for city solicitor. I see here this evening, our city solicitor, Ms. Anderson, who is here. She used to be, you know, the city attorney. Now she's the city solicitor. I'm not sure which of those two things is good, but that's the title we have for the city solicitor. Let me, let me move to, not overlooking any of the other changes, but if I can move to Page 5. At the, at the top of the page, just a few minutes ago, I referred to campaign committee and a new definition that has been suggested, and that's for political committee, defining what that political committee is for. Political committees, as we all know, deal with not only candidates for elected office, but also the success or defeat of ballot questions as well. Now, among the other things, as part of that, the ballot question, our initiatives, referenda, and other kinds of things that we see from time to time that would change a charter or put things on a ballot or remove different issues or put different issues on the ballot for consideration by voters. The next one on here, also an area which is somewhat confusing to some folks, and that is slate. There's a lot of confusion here about what is a slate. Essentially, it's people who join together in order to, and I'm going to use the word market, or maybe advertise or promote collectively candidacy from one or more candidates who join together. And in so doing, one of the purposes of that would be there are candidates who are very successful in fundraising, and they may team or slate up with other candidates who may not be as well-heeled or as capable in promoting their candidacy as others. So where we see a slate, people have to sign in so we know who's involved in that slate. And that way, we can sort of control or have oversight over how campaign funds are expended, by who and for what purpose. Moving down to the next article, we have election officials. And what you'll see in this section are certain stylistic changes. We haven't really, there's nothing that's really changed. We, you will have a Board of Election Supervisors, and the Board of Election Supervisors are very important in the process. And this is often overlooked, because the Board of Election Supervisors and the election judges really are boots on the ground. These are the people that have to actually administer the election. And one of the things that happens, and we've seen this unfortunately over the last few years, and to the extent that some of what I say has political overtones, it's not intended to, but rather to just cite the current events. The election officials have, over the last two election cycles, been vilified, have been criticized, have been called into question. They've been threatened. And it is probably one of the darkest parts of recent history, because these people are absolutely vital and integral to the process. If our election officials don't have the ability to conduct their work free of any threats or intimidation, then the whole thing kind of falls in on itself. So what is important, and we've reaffirmed in these drafts, is the fact that election officials and election judges are essentially the rulers of the day on Election Day. They are the people who are to maintain order. They are the people who are to ensure that people who are exercising franchises, voters, or people who are at the polls politicking and electioneering, do so in a way that's consistent with what the law requires. So our election officials, under the aegis of the Board of Election Supervisors, are given very, very broad powers. They have the ability to direct the police. And I see Chief Hamel, at least his photograph, a lovely photograph it is. And
Thank you.
My pleasure, sir. So the Police Department, while under the able command of Chief Hamel, is also at the direction of our Board of Elections and our election judges. So that's included. We also have made changes. made changes to article four, which is found on page eight. And that is, uh, we've used a phrase here called candidate packet. We euphemistically use that in years gone by. The notion of a candidate package is the way that we can verify the bona fides and qualifications of persons who seek elected office. And what that means is, is that there are a series of forms which serve to verify and validate a candidate's qualifications for public office. Now, when I say qualifications, there are a number of things that are required in order to be elected official in the city of Laurel, just as there are uh, in state uh, elected office as well as federal elected office. And that candidate packet, like uh, in state office, county office and federal office, is evaluated by the election officials to determine uh, on, at, you know, based on the information that's submitted, who is and who is not properly a candidate for public office? Do they meet the criteria that is required of a candidate and ultimately uh, uh, an elected official for office uh, in the city of Laurel? So this, this packet that uh, is described here includes all of the uh, references to the, the forms uh, and the applications that are made in order that a certificate of candidacy, and that's a term of art, be accepted and issued for a particular candidate who is seeking public office. Uh, now you'll go down uh, to, on page nine, to qualifications for candidates for public office. There are some stylistic changes here, but thi- this is where we talk about the, the candidacy. Now, one of the things that we added is on page ten, and that is in, in instances where candidates file uh, applications or certificates of candidacy or s- and seek uh, approval for that. There are times when election officials do have the ability to say, we, we don't think that you're qualified. Uh, and it may be a right answer, it may be a wrong answer. But the way that we solve that is in a, in an orderly fashion. And the orderly fashion that we've included here is an appeal, not to the board uh, uh, of appeals, which is previously what we did. Uh, the suggestion here is, is that that is a cumbersome, time-consuming process. That adds an entirely new layer uh, of process to an accelerated timetable, uh, which is the way we conduct our elections. I mean, this is done in, in a very short period of time. There are a lot of lead times that apply to how the election is conducted, including making sure we have the right ballots, making sure that we can validate who the voter list is. And there's a whole series of things that have to, that go on in a very, very short period of time with many, many activities that have to be completed before the election. So what, what we thought here was to streamline that process and to give someone who felt as though they had been uh, wronged in denying them as a candidate, access to the court on an accelerated basis. And what we've done here is we've increased the opportunity to make sure we have all of the candidates properly certified well before the election to reduce any possibility that we don't get all the things done in time in order uh, that the election be held with all the proper candidates in place. So you'll see there on, on page ten, a reference to uh, an appeal to the circuit court for Prince George's County. Uh, that, that's the kind of appeal uh, that usually finds uh, Ms. Patterson and I in a courtroom someplace on somebody's behalf, trying to question whether or not the people who are objecting to uh, a decision of a board of elections or in some instances where we actually represent a candidate or prospective candidate who feels as though he or she has not been given a proper treat. So that, that's included there. Uh, let's go to
May I interrupt, Mr. Marcus?
Absolutely. I'm sorry, just um, Councilmember Mills, if you don't mind. What we're going to do is let them go through all of it, and then we're going to ask the questions at the end. Do you mind saving it just until that part?
No problem.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Madam President, because my, my stream of conscious, you got to, if I'm not on the same page going through this thing, we could wind up like, you know, way off track. Uh, so let's go to conduct of elections. Uh, this is an issue that has um, been, you know, sort of a prevalent problem, not only in Laurel. Uh, and thi- this is something that happens in, in just about every jurisdiction uh, and in almost every kind of election. Uh, we, we have to deal with certain realities. One reality is that the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees everyone right to free speech. And, and putting that into context, one of the most highly prized and protected kinds of speech is what we call political speech. So political speech includes such things as uh, signs, electioneering, and all of those things that, that make up our democracy. The electioneering activities usually result in all sorts of advertisements, whether they're political advertisements or otherwise. And the problem that we have is this confluence of proliferation of signs, some of which are placed in the wrong place, some of which are placed in, in areas that become a distraction. And so we have to balance uh, the amount of uh, political advertisements and, and political uh, messaging that takes place so that we don't wind up having our communities overrun uh, for any length of time. So Prince George's County uh, has sign ordinances. The city of Laurel has sign ordinances. And the city of Laurel has a particular section of, of the code which deals with the kinds of signs that would include political signage. It's not in the election code. It, it is in the uh, ordinances that deal with uh, land use, it, with permits for signs and the like. And so when is it that, that signs can be properly posted? And the answer to that is uh, forty-five days prior to an election. And after the election's over, uh, then it's incumbent upon the candidate who is responsible for the placement of that political advertisement to remove it from uh, display so that we, we don't wind up having this proliferation of bumper stickers and the like. Uh, I'm looking at the, at the uh, zoom here, and I, and I don't see anyone who will remember the name Robin Ficker. Anyone remember Robin Ficker? Okay, so uh, Robin Ficker was a perennial candidate in Maryland, mostly in Montgomery County. And as a result of his campaign activities in Montgomery County, going back to the seventies, uh, when I was practicing law. And he had this habit of putting signs on everything and anything. And as a result of that, there was a, a case that came out, and it's called State of Maryland versus Ficker. It has to do with the obligation of a candidate to remove signs, to place signs, and to not overrun a population uh, with campaign signs, despite the fact that we've just had this discussion about First Amendment rights and the need for open and, and polit- open and free political dialogue. So that's, that's our forty-five days. We, that, that selection of forty-five days uh, is commensurate with what's in the county code. And for that reason, we thought that that would be appropriate here. And one of the things that uh, we've commended to the board of election supervisors is that because there is always a temptation for people to sort of try to i- i- skirt the forty-five days, maybe forty-six is okay, maybe I'll get my signs up forty-seven days, and maybe I won't get them down. Uh, every one of you has seen political uh, campaign signs well after the period of time that they're supposed to be taken down. And all that does is create problems for your uh, local public works people. All right, so that's uh, as far as electioneering is concerned. Uh, another major problem uh, in every election is the uh, free zone. And the free zone would be an area which is designated where no political activities are supposed to be conducted. No electioneering within so many feet uh, of a polling place. Your Laurel is blessed with people who are very politically active, people who want to exercise uh, their right to participate in elections a- and as well as many, many other places. Uh, the gauntlet, if you will, or the running the gauntlet to try to get to the polling place is sometimes a daunting task, which is why there's that hundred-foot uh, radius from where the polling place is. The uh, concept here is that not only is the polling place supposed to be sacrosanct, but one of the problems that, that has been encountered uh, are traffic issues, uh, where, where we have to make sure that people not only have access to the polling place, but do so safely, and that there not be any obstructions or inability of people to get to and from uh, the polling place itself. So we've made some changes there to sort of clean up that. All of that, by the way, all of that falls under the uh, auspice and aegis of our board of election supervisors. Let's uh, try not to keep you here all night. Uh, if you would skip with me, please, to page fourteen of your materials, to section six dash one-nine, campaign materials. One of the things uh, that I would commend to all of you is this uh, authority line. And the authority line is very important. It's very important because everybody says, well, that's really not a big deal. I mean, who cares who did it? Well, it does matter. It does matter because the message and the messenger have to be identified. Whose authority was it? How do we know that the message that is there belongs to the candidate or to a group? And how do we know who it is that's advertising or backing or endorsing the candidate? And more importantly, if every one of you who is, who stood for elected office wound up going out and, and finding campaign signs with your name on them that were not what you wanted or were in many ways offensive, then there's got to be a way to hold people accountable for what it is that they do and to make sure that the message that goes out is the message that the candidate wants. And so we, we've all seen it. We, we've gone through another election cycle, bruising as it may have been. But you know, that line, uh, I'm, and I'm not going to say a candidate's name, but I'm the candidate, and I approve this message. We know that that message was that candidate's message. On the other hand, for those of you that remember the John Kerry campaign some years ago, there were the Swift voters. Okay, uh, some of you may recall that, and there was a way for people to use Internal Revenue uh, Code Committees as a way to advertise hiding who they really were. The money was there, but nobody really knew who was behind it. And so a name was used, but you couldn't identify who the sponsor of the campaign material was. And in order to know whether you should be paying attention to campaign materials, it's essential that you know who it is that is actually the proponent of that message. So we've uh, sort of amped up, if you will, the responsibility for maintaining that authority line. A lot of people really dismiss it because it looks like it's technical. All right, um, let's move on here. Campaign treasurers and campaign uh, chair people, very important again because they're responsible for filing reports on time and completely. And there are consequences for the failure to do that. One of the things that happens is that people don't take seriously the timelines that are there. And those timelines are important because people, everybody's got to be playing with a level field. Everybody's got the obligation to file their campaign reports on time and completely. So we've beefed that up, and we've also, just so that, that the council knows, we've suggested to the board of election supervisors that they uh, take more uh, seriously and strictly uh, these deadlines and to enforce uh, those rules. It's not that they hadn't been doing it before, they had been trying every which way to make sure that they did not become overbearing in the process, but rather to give everybody a fair chance. Uh, we think that perhaps strict, strict enforcement of those uh, in the future elections may relieve a lot of tension and, and uh, discussion about who was and who was not following rules. Uh, there's a provision in here at page twenty-one, the dis- dis- the surplus funds. Uh, we put that in there. Again, that's another issue. What happens in many instances, people have campaign funds that are left over, not so much in, in city elections because of the amount of money that's raised, a little bit different uh, on, on the city level. Uh, but where is that money supposed to go at the end? And that money is by law not to go to the candidate, but rather to go to one of the enumerated uh, recipients for uh, campaign funds. And that's usually an educational or charitable organization. So let me skip to uh, page twenty-two, section six dash thirty-three. Payment for political endorsement prohibited. I leave to you to figure out whether this is an important thing in light of recent events uh, about payment for political endorsements and how that goes. If there's any better example than what we've seen in the last two weeks, I'm not sure I know what it is. But uh, it is prohibited, and we've got it uh, front and center in this draft. All right, so let, let me, uh, if I can jump to uh, six dash uh, thirty-six, penalties for certain prohibited conduct. Uh, previously, uh, the, the code contained criminal sanctions for violations of the election code. Uh, we had suggested and discussed and presented for your consideration uh, that trying to prosecute people criminally for this requires an entirely different kind of structure. We need a prosecutor. We need criminal charges to be taken out. We need somebody who's responsible for signing criminal uh, papers. And the reality is there are plenty of laws, criminal laws in Maryland that will address most of the kinds of conduct that uh, would be covered by what we thought might be a criminal statute uh, in the city. So let me give you an example. Any of you remember what happened on January sixth, four years ago? Uh, so there were election laws that were there, but really what happened is that those violations were simple. They were, they were violations of criminal statutes. There were assault, there were battery, there were trespass. We didn't need any, we didn't need any fancy election-related uh, statutes. We had what was there, and all of those things were adequate. So we've changed it to streamline it so that the statutes that are there are meaningful, enforceable, uh, and appropriate for, for what we have. Now, that's, that's everything that I, I think we want to touch on uh, under the uh, first part of the suggestions, that's the ordinance. And um, Madam President, uh, we, we can go to this, the next series, which will be much shorter, and, and I apologize if that was too long. Uh, but um,
Yes, thank you. Um, I think that what we'll do is um, go over this ordinance first and ask any questions that we may have. Because I have a feeling it's going to be really detailed as well for the next one, right? And just to keep clarity, um, I did, did you have anything further? I didn't want to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, I, 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 the, the reality is, the, the second piece of this, the charter, is a, is a lot simpler. Uh, and, and I don't think requires quite as much explanation.
Understood. Thank you so much. Um, so what we'll do now, um, thank you for sharing um, those details with us and also for working on this uh, in collaboration with Madam Clerk, Sarah Green. I saw that there were question, I'm, I'm sure there are going to be questions. Um, I saw Councilmember Jeffrey Mills, you did have questions. Would you like to start off with those questions? And then we'll just go next to everyone that does have additional questions.
Ma'am, Madam President, thank you, and uh, good evening, everyone. And so I um, I wanted to, I, you did clarify, um, and uh, Sir, um, Madam Clerk and uh, Mr. Marcus Bruce, very good work. Um, I just wanted to uh, kind of go into a few, a few things in detail. Um, I did, I did, well, you did clear up the fact, I did have a question about the um definition of board and some of the um, and some of the, and some of these uh pages here. It was just bored, but are we, uh, I had a question about the Board of Appeals. Like, uh, why, why are we negating Board of Appeals when we have a Board of Appeals?
That's that's a great question. That's a great question. So what 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 happens is you've got the whole body of administrative law and and you all are fortunate that your city solicitor happened to have been the county attorney in Prince George's County. Uh, and I spent some days there too uh many years ago. And so what we, what we know is that in administrative law, you have different levels of review. Each of those levels has different timelines and timeframes for for them to do their job. Here, we had the Board of Election Supervisors, which in the first instance would make decisions. And the presumption in administrative law is that that body that has special expertise in the subject matter over which they have authority is really the expert in that particular field. So what what winds up happening is you take that decision and then you're going to check to find out under the law whether there was what we call substantial evidence or evidence to show that the decision uh was supported. If you add another layer to that, you still have a court that's behind the Board of Appeals. And so what winds up happening is you now have three levels of review while you're trying to get an election done in a matter of weeks, if not months. And so the the problem with it is it it sounds good, but you're you don't have the kind of time in order to do this that really makes sense. So your Board of Election Supervisors, all of whom have been selected, uh vetted, and they're doing their job. If they do something that is either wrong as a matter of law or if there's not evidence to support their decision, the the route from that point is to go to the court. Now, we have a similar situation, just so we, you know, like we have a county council. County council, if if you're dissatisfied with the decision of the county council, you go to court. There's not, there's not a stop in between. There are some decisions that are done by our planning board and then to the district council uh and then to the court, but these things take a lot of time. It in the elections that are done for the state, when the Board of Election Supervisors for the county uh or uh any other uh election situation, if you're, if you're dissatisfied or disagree, the recourse is you go to court. There's not, there's not an intermediate body. There are places where Boards of Appeal have uh uh a role, but we removed it and said, if if there's a problem, let's not, let's not gum it up. Let's get it resolved and get it to court so that the election can proceed. So I think that's probably a long-winded way of hopefully explaining uh the suggestion here.
So let me shorten it. So if um, if the Board, the Board of Election Supervisors made made a decision, we're supposed to just skip over the Board of Appeals and try to get a court date where you have three days. But in this, in this, um, on page twenty-five, um, you have the decision of you have to go to the circuit court and you have within five days. So we have three days and we have five days. But the, I mean, do you really honestly think that uh an individual can get a court date within three days at the circuit court in Prince George's County?
Well, what what the the part of your analysis that is a problem, you're right about three days, five days. There are different situations. The five days is for decisions that are made about people violating the rules. That's one thing. That's not as time-intensive. That really is not that big of a deal. What is deal is for people who are candidates or not candidates or election results. That's got to happen quickly. Um, and and so the the circumstance is a little different, but you're absolutely right. What this goes to is not the court date, but the date on which you seek judicial review. And and so your point, i- if it was trying to get a court date in Upper Marlboro in three days, you could stand on your head. You're never going court date in three days, not a month. And if you got a court date in three days, it'd be continued for another nine months before you got any answer. And and all this stuff has to happen quickly. The issue is not when you're going to get a court date. The issue is whether or not you seek judicial review. Now, your point about the exigency and the timeliness of the court acting, the court knows in election cases that they got to do it quick. They they know that. I can te- I can tell you, you know, personal experience that we've been through uh a claim to the court all the way through the Maryland Supreme Court in a matter of two months, top to bottom. And so, and the reason for that is is that the courts are aware that this is a vital part of our democracy. It's vital that we have an election system that you have a, you have recourse. You may not be right, but you got an opportunity to make a case. And and if you make your case after the election's over, obviously, that's not justice and it's not a a system that's working. So it it to the extent that we've tried to streamline it, it's to make sure that we can actually get this done and have judicial and meaningful review in time to make our elections work.
Understand. So, but again, why are we negating the Board of Appeal? We, our Board of Appeal is here. We we can, I mean, we don't have to wait for a court date. We know, you know, it's it's a time, you know, there's going to be time consuming to go to the circuit court. And and not only, not only do we have the opportunity to voice our argument at the circuit court, but if we don't like that argument, then you can go to the Supreme Court. But we have, we have and are paying individuals uh on the Board of Appeals right here, whereas though that can be, you know, faster than the circuit court. So I I would beg to differ to go to the circuit court.
Well, Mr. Mills, everything you just said, I I would agree with, except that you overlooked one little piece.
Correct.
And that little piece is, is that after you go to the Board of Appeals, where do you go next?
Af- after the Board of Appeals, because that would be the first step in the agreement. That would, that should be the first step. Even 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 if um we were uh uh at a, at an employment, the first step is to file a complaint with the supervisor. Second step is with the union. Third step is with the courts.
I I I'm not, I I think, I think.
Okay, let me, let me, let me clarify, let me clarify, sorry. So the Board, the Board of Appeals, after, after the Board of Elections, you have the Board of Appeal, then you have the Circuit Court, then you have the Supreme Court in that chain.
Okay, you, the 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 problem, the problem with your analysis is the Board of Appeals has limited authority, but more importantly, the court is the last resort. And so all you've done is you you've now said we not only have to go through the Board of Appeals, we have to go through the Circuit Court. You've already told me that, and correctly, that that's, that that's a hard thing to do. So you still don't have an answer and all you've really done is introduced yet another layer before you get to court. And so wh- while this is all going on, it's still going to get resolved by the court. What we've done is eliminated a delay and the effort that goes into it. You're still going to wind up in Upper Marlboro whether you like it or not. So the the question is.
I I I beg to differ. I mean, just, I mean, the reason, the, let's, let's, let's be honest here. The reason why we're here is because I found a loophole two years ago and and the Board of Appeals, after I, after the Board of Elections Supervisors made a decision and I appealed that decision, I I went through the proper chain, I paid to have a a sit down with the Board of the, Board of Appeals. I studied the law that we are, that we are going through right now today. And I found the loophole in which this is why we're here, because there is major problems within this, within this law. I found it two years ago and this is the reason why I'm sitting here today. After the fact of I I I filed the appeal with the, with the Board of Appeals, I did not have to go to the Circuit Court because the Board of Appeals made a decision. Now, let's just say, for instance, if if they had not allowed me, they made a decision to not allow me to run, then I would have took it to the Circuit Court. And if that Circuit Court said, I'm sorry, yeah, the Circuit Court, if the Circuit Court did, I didn't, I didn't agree with the agreement. If they denied me to run, then I would have took it to the Supreme Court. Now, that would have been my last measure. That is, that is the chain of law.
And well, you and I could probably debate this, you know, into the wee hours of the morning.
Well, do you really call it a debate when I, when I am, I am living proof?
Okay, well, the 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 issue here, as I understand it, is you've asked a question about the Board of Appeals. Obviously, if the, if the decision of this tribunal is to use the Board of Appeals, that that's entirely up to the group. I mean, we're, thi- this is, thi- this is, you guys will have to, you're going to have to vote on this. If you think that that process is better, then obviously this, the the council's going to wind up saying, we think that's a better way to go. We think it's better to have three levels uh to, in order to get through a decision as opposed to two and streamline. If that's a decision, that's entirely, entirely up to the the city council and the elected members of your, of your panel. So, I I, you know.
I mean, and I mean, just to, just to share the information from another, from another attorney, um, David Johnston, who is on the Board of Appeals. And uh, two years ago, he had made the decision and it's actually on um, on record on, and you can watch the video, but he actually mentioned the fact of, um, you know, if I wasn't to, if I wasn't going to get a positive um answer, that I could go to the Circuit Court. He actually said it. So I really think that um we should keep the Board of Appeals because we have a Board of Appeals right here in this, in this great city of ours.
So I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Um, I just want to, I appreciate you answering the question. Thank you, Mr. Marcus. And I'm assuming, um, Mr. Councilmember Mills, that you are, have received the the answer that you were seeking or not seeking.
So yes, I I just received, yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, so he, so Mr. Marcus just said that we could keep that. So um, so I can move on from that one, that, that question.
Okay.
Now, there was uh, on page six, on page six, there is a um duly, uh, let's see here, um. Yeah, on page six, where it says, uh, the board shall include a person, I'm sorry, a chairperson and four chief judges. Um, it says, so qualified was strike? Duly registered, I I was suggesting duly registered voters of the city.
I'm I'm sorry, sir, you're going to have to help me out. I'm not sure.
Okay, right, right at the, right at the top of page, of page six.
Okay.
And um, now we have numbers on the, on the corner of the um, of the printed document. Uh, page ten is is in the, in the, in the, in the box in the corner. But you, the numbers you were referencing, I'm going off of the numbers that you were referencing, page six.
Okay.
Okay. So.
There are, there are paragraphs that have letters by them, so the way that maybe we can get on the same page.
Okay, I got you. So that would be section six dash four. Section A.
A, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so right there at um qualified voters, uh, well, let me just start with this, with the sentence. It says, the board shall be comprised of five qualified voters. I was just suggesting duly registered voters of the city.
To be consistent with the, where we change qualified to re- uh, registered.
Yes.
Throughout the document.
Yes, be, yes. Yes.
You have additional items as well, Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, moving down to uh where it says March nineteenth in section B. March nineteenth should um, should reference mo- uh, March two thousand twenty-four. Just as you changed it at the um, on page, page six. Now, that's um, let me go back. Okay, so on page two, on page two, at the um general provisions, you scratched out, uh, you striked out November two thousand nineteen and put November twenty twenty-four? This is why I'm, I'm referencing to strike out March nineteenth as you did uh November two thousand nine, uh, two thousand nineteen to March twenty twenty-four.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Mills, the the issue with that, um, so this is applicable to the November twenty twenty-four, um, after the November twenty twenty-four election. The March came from our, when the city's original elections were held in March. And and um, then they were changed to November. So that's why it's still in there as honorable for the second Monday of March. Um, and then every four years thereafter.
Okay, all right.
Um, so I think that's where March came from.
Okay, thank you. Let me scratch that out. So I I'm just clarified. Now, there's a um, in section E, there's a typo of employees. This is a V there instead of a Y.
Councilmember Mills, uh, um, uh, sorry to cut you off. If, are there any additional questions? I think it would be helpful if you have the recommendations, like for me, I put mine, like those in a document. So then they can take them all and and uh either consider them for that. Um, it would be helpful if we could ask the questions that we have now, so then each council member could go through and receive an answer um from them so we can um move forward. Because I'm I'm sure we also have questions on the next one as well, not to rush you, but just wanted to give a recommendation.
And ma'am, Madam President, if I could add to that, um, if Councilmember Mills and any of the council members, if there's any typos or any small changes that are not like, you know, substantive or uh legal questions, then um you can just send them to me um separately and then I can make, you know, make the corrections.
Okay. All right, so let me, I'll, so I'll skip over some of that stuff that I can go over with you, Madam Clerk. Um, but let's go to page ten where, um, again, um, speaking of the, of the Board, um, Board of Appeals in this section, that the Board should not be, should not be taken out. And um, this is uh section B. And the um, in the section three, everything that was, everything that was striked out right here should be kept. We need the, the, we need the Board of Appeals. So everything that was in this section, section B, that was striked out should be kept. We need to keep the Board of Appeals.
You have any additional items?
I'm flip, I'm, I've got a lot of pages here.
Okay.
Flipping through the pages. All right, so uh, on page eighteen. uh, on page eighteen, this is, uh, section six twenty-five. Section six twenty-five. And that would be C, where it says that, um, Mr. Marcus, you did, um, didn't mention this, um, but you have added here that no candidate shall appoint themselves as nor serve as their own treasurer? We've been, we've been doing this for, for many years, even, even, uh, David Johnston, who, who's ran for city council, uh, was his own treasurer. Why, why, uh, why negate that, sir?
Hey, can I, can I, Mr. Mills, they changed that a couple of years ago, sir. When I, in two thousand seventeen, when I came as a city councilman, you could act as a treasurer, then the following year, two thousand nineteen, they changed that. So, that, uh, that been changed since two thousand nineteen.
I, I beg to differ, sir. I, I actually, I, I actually, two years ago, um, I was my own treasurer.
Yeah, but I don't think you should have. That, that law was changed. Yeah, I'm just gonna put that out there. I know that I was seventeen, I was my own treasurer, because that was the law stated, but then they changed it in two thousand nineteen. So, I ran two thousand nineteen. They say your candidate cannot be the own treasurer, so that was right. The code did state that, so I just wanted to.
So, so, now we have, so that will bring out an issue about the, those who are supposed to be professional of, that is on the Board of Election Supervisors then. See, we, see, we, we kind of tearing a, tearing a, taking the mask off right here of those who are supposed to be professionals, and, um, we bring issues up that, you know.
I'll just say, I'll just put this way, Councilmember Mills, that, and the law was changed in two thousand nineteen. So, you go back to two thousand nineteen thing, the state fish, you can't, a candidate cannot be his own treasurer. So, I know that. I don't know how you, how that happened for you, the last election, whatever the case may be, but I know specific that was changed.
So, so, just, so, now, what we are reading right here is the law. And that, the reason why it's being added right here is because it wasn't in the law. So, that's, so that's why, um, if Mr. Marcus, because you are the lawyer, um, if you can explain why do we have this now? And, you know, it doesn't have to be, because by being that this is right here being added, so, that means, um, we're, we're trying to add it right now. But I would, I would ask to not add this information. And if an individual was interested in being his own, his or her own treasurer, then I think that that would be feasible.
So, the, the, the reason it's there, uh, is because under state law, the treasurer can't be the candidate. And the, and the reason for that is to make sure that somebody who's independent is dealing with the campaign funds that are to be received. Funds are supposed to pass through the hands of the treasurer, not the candidate, to make sure that there's proper accounting for the funds that are, that are taken in. So, and, and, and I'm not sure what happened in your case, Mr. Mills, but one of the possibilities is if you had a continuing committee, there would have been, the, you would not have necessarily gone back and had a new chair or new treasurer. So, I, I think the mayor referred to wh- when that change was. Frankly, I don't recall, but i- if, if your committee was formed before, uh, then you wouldn't have necessarily had another treasurer, uh, aside. The law could have changed, but that didn't necessarily mean that somebody figured out that you didn't have a treasurer who was someone other than yourself. The, the, the point of it is, it's state law. Where did it come from? That, you know, that's the best I can do.
Yeah, so, but, but this is, but this is being, but you, you wish to, you wish to have this added.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Mills, they're adding it because they want to make sure that the, the, um, law is consistent, our law is consistent with state law. So, we don't really have a choice here, because we're updating the code.
Well, I mean, there is a choice, but let's not say there's no choice. The first part, the first part of your decision, I was going with it, but to then add, say, we don't have a choice, um, we do have a choice. So.
We have to comply with state law.
Well, that's why I'm saying, when, we have to comply with state law, our, our code should comply with state law.
And starting now, because, just, because this was never in, uh, the law.
Yes, we're updating it right now, Councilmembers. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, thank you very much, okay.
So, just to get back on track, um, do you have any additional questions, Councilmember Mills?
And I, um, I, um, I, um, all the way.
Unless you would like.
I am all the way, I am all the way through. Um, strike the board.
We can always come back if you wanted to raise your hand, but, uh.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm all the way through now. Thank you very much, and, uh, great work, you all. Appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir. Um, does any of the additional council members have? I see Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, first off, just to express, uh, thanks as well to the Board of Election Supervisors, to the clerk, to the council, and also the attorneys that have advised in the drafting of this document. I know it was a lot of effort, and I know it's something I shared last year as well, that I thought it was an area that made a lot of sense for us as a city to revisit and to update, so it's great to see this work and process. I know I spent something like five or six hours over the last five or so days reading this document, as I'm sure other members of council have as well. Um, there's a couple syntax stuff, which I'll send to the clerk separately. Um, and, uh, just want to maybe focus on some top items, and there'll be some other ones off, off forward as well. We can continue the conversation Monday, but and thank you also for Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson for being here to sort of help us from the informational side, um, just to understand some of the, the election law. But specific to this ordinance, um, couple items, I, I saw, uh, section six dash five, uh, paragraph two, um, talked about, um, you know, striking, it struck from the, uh, sort of role of the board to sort of keep and maintain the voter registry. I believe that relates to the fact that the ordinance is being modified to rely on the PG County, the county level registry. I just want to be sure I'm understanding that provision correctly. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, ultimately, that, that is correct, Councilman. Uh, that's exactly right. The, uh, the city relies on the, uh, voter registry from Prince George's County, but obviously only to the extent that there are people who are living in territorial boundaries of the city of Laurel.
Gotcha. Uh, second question, um, section six dash nine talks about candidates for public office and obtaining the certificate of candidacy. I, and I know in the, uh, the other document related to the charter amendment, um, it sort of struck the paragraph related to the residency requirement. Uh, separately, it talked about retaining that for sort of the ward level members, but not necessarily at the mayor or the at-large position. Um, I wasn't sure I was seeing anywhere else in the document where it explicitly stated the mayor and the at-large council member need to be residents of Laurel. And maybe it's implicit in this section here in terms of you have to be a duly registered voter in the city. Is that the intent of where it's defined that the candidates for those offices actually need to be Laurel residents?
Yes, sir. That, that's exactly it.
The charter?
I beg your pardon?
It's in the charter.
No, actually, that paragraph got struck in the amendment at the charter level, and that's why I was sort of searching to see where it was still retained. Um, but that's helpful. And I know in some of the other cases, there's a definition around residency that you need to be a resident for at least six months. I think for ward members, you have to be a resident at least six months in the ward you want to represent. Is that not intended to be a requirement for the mayor on the art lodge position?
So, for, I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I was, if you take a look at the definition of voter, person who's registered, qualified to vote in any election in the city, uh, as the definition, I, I'm not sure if that, if that answers your question.
Yeah, so it's really, that's really like an implicit, uh, indirect way of saying the resident of the city. So, we remove the explicit requirement, and we're just sort of relying on the implicit. Um, it, just, it's really super nuanced. If somebody happens to be in the PG voter roles as a Laurel resident, but maybe moved out of Laurel, I guess it could be possible, somebody could squeak in. But, uh, you know, under that type of definition, but that might be too remote a possibility. Um, my preference would be for it to be explicitly stated, but, uh, you know, maybe that's something for consideration by council.
You, 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 you bring up, you bring up a very good point, and, and one of the, one of the issues that comes up, not only in Laurel, but, but elsewhere. And that is, that when does somebody actually change their residency? Uh, you know, is it when your driver's license changes? Is it when you were in the process of moving? Is it when you, uh, formally, you know, take steps to, to notify tax authorities? It, it really is sort of a fluid concept, and there are people who prove, but don't necessarily change their voter status.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, and that's why I would argue for us to maybe include an explicit statement on that front, but you know, that, again, that's something we can continue to explore. Also, again, whether there's a time requirement as there is defined for the other, other offices, so. Um, but I, I just wanted to clarify to make sure I wasn't missing anything on that front. Uh, I want to move to section six dash nine, paragraph, uh, two, uh, which has to do with the, you know, submitting the application. I know under the, the code as it existed, uh, originally, candidates as defined were able to submit applications up until the last Friday of September. And even though we weren't even quite following that practice, technically, that's what was in the code. I see here, we're editing that to move it to the, uh, first Friday of August. And, um, again, maybe it's something for conversational. I'm, I want to be sure, my intent through the, the rewrite here and our edits is to be sure we have an even field for anybody who's interested to run for office. Certainly that all the voters are able to exercise their rights to vote. Um, to me, I don't want it to be presidential against anyone who might decide to run a little later in the process. I know I've talked to, uh, members of council from other jurisdictions, and some of them maybe were late entrants, because they saw, hey, they wanted to sort of step in if there wasn't somebody they thought was adequately qualified, and so I don't want us to preclude a scenario like that happening. So, again, I'm just bringing this up as a, uh, for conversation as we go through this process this month, that, that might be a little too early uh, in the process. Um, and, uh, and I, I even want to just throw out there today an idea of sort of a rolling approval process in a, in an allowable time window, maybe May one to, uh, you know, uh, August thirty-one. Um, right now, the way this is written is to say, hey, everybody gets in as a batch. The board sits down, approves everybody as a batch, and then those candidates sort of, um, undertake their election activities. Um, I, a lot of other races aren't run that way. People can enter a race at different points in time, and so I think it might be worth considering, and I, I say this to my fellow members of council, to sort of say, hey, uh, and a rolling approval process within a defined window might be a healthy way to approach this. Um, um, I, and I just offer that as a, as a comment. Is there something you want to add, Mr. Marcus?
The, the only, the only thing, and, and, and Councilman, you, you are absolutely right, that, that, that the flexibility for filing deadlines, uh, is something that, that is legislative fiat, but the, the, the question and the, and the reason that, that I think this suggestion was made, and, and there's nothing written in stone, uh, you all can make whatever decisions you think might be appropriate, is the, the run-up, the lead times, in order to get ballots prepared and, uh, make sure that all of the necessary process is done so that they can vet each of the, uh, applicants, issue the certificates, and then obviously, once that process goes on, that, then get the ballots printed. So, um, it, it really, it really is, is more logistics than it is anything else, but you're absolutely right. Uh, that, that, that there's always flexibility, but the longer that, the longer that it takes, the more likely we are to screw up. I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
Yeah, no, I definitely, I think that is the constraint that needs to be on the later time. You know, how long does it take to approve somebody who applies? We want to be sure that we're not creating unnecessary pressure. I know as the code is written here, and the ballot itself is being required to be prepared no more than eight days before Election Day. Um, so, we've certainly given ourselves a lot of process on that end, and I might even suggest that should be a little earlier. Um, but, but in my mind, at least in first thought, uh, like an August thirty-one date, um, you know, provides two months, two months and a week prior to election to sort of do that, and, and that might be deemed to be adequate. But definitely something I think worth conversing. Um, I did also make a note, uh, in, you know, in section six dash ten, and at the end, as did Councilman Mills around the Board of Appeals. You know, I haven't formed a full opinion on that yet, so it was very helpful for me to hear, you know, his, his thoughts and, and your thoughts this evening. Um, I know the argument on one side was that perhaps that's a speedier resolution under a time-compressed election process. I, I also see the other side that perhaps it's speedier to have the Board of Appeals, because it allows us to handle a question locally and maybe get to a resolution more quickly. I, I would be interested to hear, uh, Mr. Marcus, in, in terms of if something was raised to the PG Circuit, uh, Court, uh, how quickly do you think it would be docketed? Uh, I know we mentioned, you, you mentioned they get order of preference, but is that like a one week, two week, one month? Um.
No, it's, 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 it, it's gotta be done quickly. But Ms. Patterson and I have the dubious distinction of having made election challenges and litigating them through the court uh, with the deadlines that are there. And, you know, if, when you think about it, uh, you, you, you all don't have to deal with primary elections. So, when, when, if I tell you in terms of how the court handles it, imagine that it's not just one election. Imagine what happens if it's a primary, and then you've got a general election. So, in terms of the court's facility being able to do it, I'm, and, and I'm, I'm not here to tell you that, that our court is great or that it's horrible, but I am here to tell you that in those instances where there is an election, that's a high priority item. And it's a high priority item because it goes to the heart of the process.
If you were to throw a dart, would you say one week? Would you say two weeks, four weeks, a month and a half?
I, I would tell you that if you had an election case, uh, you would, you would file, and you'd be in court within a week or ten days.
Okay.
May not be the end, but you're gonna be there.
Have a hearing, yeah.
And, and if you doubt, if you doubt that, we have filed suit on Election Day, okay? On Election Day, if the courts closed and litigated cases on Election Day, because there are judges that are specially designed in order to do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. No, that, that's helpful to sort of get an idea of what that might look like practically. Thank you. Um, skipping ahead just to, uh, section sixteen, I know you made reference to this in your presentation just around the electioneering and the signage questions. Um, I know the forty-five days seemed tight from my perspective. Um, certainly, I, again, we're sort of weighing too goods. We want to be sure that the city isn't littered with signs for months and months and months. But we also want to be sure that, you know, we're giving adequate time for people to sort of get outward. You know, I'd be concerned, and I'd like to hear others' thoughts as well, that if we wait too late in the process, is unnecessarily gives an advantage to incumbents, um, because somebody new might not be able to get their name out there. Um, you know, I might advocate more of a sort of a sixty or ninety day period. Um, I know the certification process as written in this code right now, sort of that transpires, uh, sort of mid-August. So, you know, maybe like, uh, um, you know, mid-August, September, October, sort of a two and a half months leading up to the election. Um, again, something for conversation, just a thought occurred to me as I was flipping through. Um, one last question, and this is more, uh, trivia on my part, because I remember reading this, uh, sort of two years ago. And I know you had the benefit of your audience today being, somebody, but all of us have gone through this process, so it's not new to us. Um, but, uh, on section six dash twenty-seven, um, one of the lines I remember reading two years ago and scratching my head on was that for campaign contribution receipts, the responsibility of a treasurer to give a receipt, and it's written such that it says you need to give a receipt for a contribution or tickets you may sell to a campaign event over fifty-one dollars, or upon receipt for any lesser amount. And I didn't know why we were saying more than fifty-one dollars or less than fifty-one dollars, as if there's something I may just be missing in that. I don't know if that's something you know off the top of your head.
Uh, off the top of my head, it's the state law.
Okay, there's, so we give a receipt, if it's more than fifty-one dollars, and we give a receipt if it's less than fifty-one dollars, and that's the state law.
What, what, what really happened was, in the old days, they used to have, like, dollar boards, they used to use, you know, cash, cash kinds of games and things like that to raise money.
Yeah.
And so, you had a lot of cash that was floating around, and unfortunately, when it came down to account for the cash, it wasn't always an easy thing to, to records.
Okay, yeah, and some of that might be anachronisms, so that's sort of interesting trivia and history. Thank you. Uh, last item, um, which I don't think we'll be able to get into tonight, but I, I had corresponded with the clerk, that it seemed to be to section six dash thirty-three. And I might, and we may not be prepared to discuss that right now, but I at least want to mention that in passing. And I, I yield back to, uh, the President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there additional questions? Councilmember Cole, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I, like the other council members, want to echo just our.
Thank you, Madam President. I, like the other council members, want to echo just our thanks to all of the Board of Elections Supervisors that have worked on this, the clerk, Mr. Marcus and his team. This really does clean up all the inaccuracies and contradictions that were in the last election. So it'll make it very clear for candidates and for the board to fairly administer our election. I did submit several questions to the clerk last week and received answers to to most of them. One of them that was previously mentioned by Mr. Simmons was the the signage language. Mr. Marcus, I believe you mentioned that that specifically mirrors the Prince George's County rule, the forty five days. So I like that anytime that we can be consistent with county and state law, it just makes it easier, especially when we have such a transient population that might be coming in. They live somewhere else in the county. They don't want to come to Laurel and be like, why do you do it this way? So anytime that we can make it consistent, I think that's that's really good. Similarly, on that vein, when you look at other municipalities, even the county, they do go straight to the Board of, they they skip the Board of Appeals and go straight to the Circuit Court. I think that also is fair to our residents. A lot of our people, whether they be on the Board of Elections Supervisors or on the Board of Appeals or our neighbors, they're the people that we have to live with, see out in the community. I think moving any discrepancies from the Board of Appeals to the court, where it's an impartial judge, that's someone outside of the city that can look at our law and say, yes, this candidate did violate it, or no, they did not, I think that keeps our community fair. And as Mr. Marcus says, they can do it on the day of the election. So if we had something that happened on Election Day and we needed a decision that at that point, our Board of Appeals could not convene on Election Day. So I do like moving it there. It might be a little bit more cumbersome for some of the candidates, but I think it's a fairer process to all of the candidates. My last question, Mr. Marcus, I had one regarding section six dash thirty five, the infractions. Should it say not exceeding one thousand dollars per infraction, or is it just they get one thousand dollars total?
No, it's it it, your your point's well taken. I saw your your comment. A way to further clarify that is is per violation. It's it's not like go out there and wreak havoc, and then you only have a thousand. Or somebody who, you know, does a couple over two different days winds up, you know, with a different number that. And and these and these numbers are are significant. They may not sound like they're significant, but they are. And this is hopefully a way to sort of curtail attempts to circumvent what the law is supposed to do.
Thank you. And similarly, in that vein, would the board or would the council be able to make a schedule of fines for first offense, second offense? Right now, it just says thousand dollars. It's not really clear how that's applied.
So, and and that's also a fair point. I I saw your your comment about graduated fines and penalties. That's, it's entirely possible. I think I've been doing work for the city for four to ten years or so. And the the board has always been very forgiving when it came to the assessment of fines, even when things were done in a way that questioned whether it was blatant disregard or not, but that's all in the eye of the beholder. I think you could do graduated fines as a practical matter. There haven't been that many fines that have been handed out that would have triggered much more than a thousand dollars. And usually, there's requests for relief for people who don't follow the time constraints. You put a you put a fine up for five thousand dollars in in a town election, you might as well, you might as well not have anybody running for office. So there's, it's kind of a rule of reason. It's it's not like federal campaigns where the fines can be ten thousand, twenty thousand, things like that. Of course, the the volume of funds that are raised is a little different, too.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Madam President, that concludes my questions for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills, I'm just gonna check in with Councilwoman Johnson to see if she has any questions as well. Since I know that you did go, did you have any additional, if you don't mind? Did you have any additional, I'm sorry, any questions, Councilwoman Johnson?
I do, and it's just quick. Like I said, this is a very sensitive subject for all of us, as we're going through it. So I appreciate everybody taking the time and going through this diligently. But just my question, good to go last, because a lot of people talked about a lot of things, so I don't have to revisit those. The only thing else that I had a question about was on page fourteen, under the challengers and watchers certificate. Under the wording, it says, you know, designated me to act as challenger and watcher for blank election district. I'm wondering what is supposed to go there? Is that the ward? I just didn't understand the wording for that.
Yeah, that's the where you would put the word.
Award, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll send my, you know, syntax and proofreading error document to you, Sarah, tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilmember Mills, please proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Councilman Cole that where where did he know where someone skipped the Board of Appeals, like what town, what city, what state?
Mr. Mills, you'd have to look up the other ones. I don't have it right off the top of my head, but I have talked to other council members at MML, and they go to the Board of Appeal, or not Board of Appeals, to the Circuit Court.
What, what town, what city, what state?
Like I just said, I'll I'll get you that information, Mr. Mills.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, and just another comment that, you know, people ask, you know, why do we do, or why would we do, or how do we do, or how can we do? It's because this city has those different elements to be able to do thing, different things, you know, like permits and stuff, you know, like we're we're different than other municipalities. So, you know, to to say that we should be on the same level as PG County or the State of Maryland, well, I mean, I understand what you're saying. But here, we have the capabilities of doing other things that, you know, that we possibly can do, like having. Because I mean, like, if if we're not going to use the Board of of Appeals, then, I mean, we literally just voted or reappointed those to be on the Board of Appeals. So if we're not going to have or not be able to, if we're not going to use the Board of Appeals, then I then I would like to vote to to dismantle the Board of Appeals. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. So I actually have a couple of big picture recommendations and a couple of questions. The additional ones that I plan on sending, just touch on section six dash three, six dash nine, six dash ten, six dash eleven, six dash thirteen, six dash nineteen, six dash twenty one, six dash twenty five, six dash thirty one, and six dash thirty six, but I'll send those in a document to you, Madam Clerk. My first question, and if anyone or Mr. Marcus can confirm, can you please just reconfirm who was a part of the updates and recommended changes for ordinance number two zero three eight?
So the first cut, I think, was Ms. Green, who took a look at it, prepared the first draft, it then came to us to do. And and I I can tell you that Ms. Patterson spent a substantial amount of time, as you can tell, in doing that. And and that's a product that came out of this office. And I, you know, what what I would say to you is, we regularly practice in in state court. And we do FEC work, too, where we're dealing with codes in in how elections are supposed to be conducted. And we also litigate quite a bit on on how the courts are supposed to wind up doing this. So what we what we tried to do is, I don't want to use the word best practices, but what we did is we we relied on, to the extent that the state law existed, to model what we were doing under the state law. The the municipal codes don't follow expressly. The the municipal code doesn't follow the state law. In fact, it's specifically exempted. But where you have something like that, we've used that. So it would have been us, our firm, putting this together using that material.
Thank you. I appreciate you confirming. An additional couple of items that I noticed, I think a couple, a couple of the council members have mentioned page ten, six dash ten, in regards to the timeframe that was there. You did clarify that, so thank you very much. And page twenty, it might be twenty five, there's two different numbers on there. But it's section six dash thirty six. Is it? Yes, this is this, yes, okay. There are, there's a calendar day, there is, well, does both of those, do they include, are you referencing workdays? Or weekends included?
So the the way the rules work, if it's under ten days, if it's under ten days, it's business days, court days that where the court's in session. If it's over ten days, it's calendar days.
Okay, it may be helpful, just for clarity purpose, if we put in there, or if it was put in there, that it's considered workdays, just so people are 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 aware, they know right away, because I would have no idea by reading that.
So, so if you take a look at page twenty five, for that five day period, it's calendar days.
Yeah, that's still not very clear for me. I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just trying to think, you know, with with the diversity that we have of everyone that applies for, you know, to run and to become a candidate. And if we're clarifying already and making edits, it just might be helpful, you know, not, it's just a recommendation. I think it would be helpful, that's all.
What whatever, whatever the, you know, the will of the of the council is, you you all sort of control that.
No, absolutely. I wanted to understand from you ju- just before I made that recommendation, so that I can make it fairly and in line with either what you're saying or what I'm researching. I did hear Councilmember Mills reference about the Circuit Court date days, and that's true. I understand that as well, being an election judge prior to becoming an elected official. So I know that it can be very tedious. But if you're saying that that's only for, that will be just be the date which you will seek judicial review, if we could possibly put that copy or context in there, it may be helpful for people to understand that, so it doesn't seem like it's such a tight timeframe. In addition to that, referencing section six dash thirteen, page eleven, do you mind just explaining for clarity purpose what that sentence means?
Page eleven.
Yep, so I can read it for you. Candidates for public office shall not run for office as a candidate, representative. The item three box is cutting it off, or a not of any political party. So I'm just, I think the confusion part is candidates for public office shall not run for office as a candidate?
Okay, so so what that is, I I know this is going to be, this is going to be hard to swallow, but you are not, you are not a candidate for the Democratic Party, you are not a candidate for the Republican Party, you are a candidate for public office. These are nonpartisan elections. So I I know every one of you is registered in in one party or an independent or something like that. For purposes of of municipal elections, you're not running as a Democrat, you're not running as a Republican. And so your party affiliation is not part of this process.
Thank you for explaining that. Based on your your suggestion or your definition, I would recommend that we clarify that to make it a little bit clearer, because it it wasn't clear for me when I read it. And I think there's one more that I have, yes. No, actually, two more, sorry. Section six dash seventeen, page twelve. Could you please explain why the ingress and egress areas were added in? Did we see some, did something, you mentioned, or someone mentioned that in the election, there were some issues? Did you see issues that pertain to that? That's why that was added?
Because your your buildings have different doors? Okay, so the question then becomes, wh- wh- where do you go in? You've got different places for people to go in and out. So thi- this way, it it's a hundred feet from whatever that is. The idea, obviously, at the end of the day, is to make sure that people are not obstructed coming in or going out. And, you know, in in the tumult of elections and the zeal that people bring to it, unfortunately, you know, sometimes we have problems, and to clarify that as much as possible.
Thank you. I appreciate it. In addition, page ten, section six dash eleven, there is a section there that says, and I just want to make sure I read it properly. In section eight, six dash eleven A, it says, behind social security number and such other information as the Board of Elections Supervisors may require. I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I feel like for transparency purpose, I think that the applicant should know what's required. It might need to be more defined so that they're they're aware of what they need to expect or either adhere to ahead of time. When you leave it open that way, it's up to anyone's discretion on what they then want to deem that as.
Well, Mike, I can kind of address that, Madam President. So what this means is that the board can, if some, there's a situation or something going on prior to creating the packets, when you got, when a candidate picks up a packet, the packet's going to be the packet, the same for everybody. But if the board finds that, you know, some, for some reason, they need to require some other proof of something or it would be outlined before the packets are completed. So this just gives the board some discretionary options. If they figure, if they, if something comes up and they say, oh, we need to start requiring an electric bill or some other proof of residency or something like that. But at the time that the board, that that will be determined before the packets are created. So all the count, everybody who is a candidate will get the same packet, will have the same requirements, and those won't be changed once it's set. So that's why it says that, you know, may be required, but the statement shall be made on forms provided by the board. Those are, those are done ahead of time. So it's not, we're not, so it's not, the board's not going to say, okay, here's your packet, and then come pick it up. And then, you know, two weeks later, say, you got to give us this other document. That that's not what that is intended for. I don't know if that helps you any, or?
No, no, it does help. Thank you so much. And so I I just want to reconfirm that you're saying everybody's packet will be the same, but depending on the different circumstances, it may be required for someone to provide something different than someone else?
No. So it basically, if the board, let's say this election happens in twenty five, and an issue comes up and they say, well, we weren't able to determine, you know, residency or something. This would allow them, without having to go back and change the law again, because we're not, the board, the packet is not specific in the code. The packet is, you know, the form set by the board, by the board. So the packet will be the same. Once the packet's decided, the packet's decided, everyone's going to get the same exact packet. So let's say they decide, we need to start requiring utility bills to prove that you lived at at your residence for sixty or thirty, whatever the requirement is, six months or a year. Then this would allow the board to say, when we outline what's required in the packet, they would, they could say, okay, we need this. You know, when you get the packet, it says you need to get your driver's license, your social security number, you know, all that stuff. So that would be like, and they would be, this would allow them to add an item. But the packet, that would all be decided at one time, and that would be the packet that everybody would get. So it wouldn't be like, Mr. Mills gets, he has to provide five things, and Councilwoman Clark has to provide seven. Be like that, yeah.
Okay, so maybe, I appreciate you sharing that. My concern with that was, would it be equitable across the board for everyone, or would would it be changed for a specific person? And I don't know if we can maybe add that language in there or make a note at the bottom that this is what it's referencing, and this is what will be. I under, I appreciate you sharing that with me because I was a little bit confused about that. So thank you very much. One more question that I have, and then just one suggestion. One more question that I have, and then just one suggestion. Uh, if possible, could someone tell me, with the three date, calendar days, for the circuit court on page ten, section six dash ten. After the three days that someone is allowed to seek judicial review, is there a timeframe after that, that is? Either known, not written, that the candidate has, um, before they're either, either, you know. Dropped off of the list, or what occurs after that, for transparency?
They will file a, a petition in the court. And that's, that is the appeal, there's a, there's a process for that to happen. It's docketed, once it's docketed, there's a requirement that whoever it is that's seeking judicial review. Notify the, the city, so that the city can then make all of the re- relevant, necessary documents available. To be transmitted to the court, so that, that what has to happen is. When someone says, hey, listen, I think the, that the board messed up, they didn't consider this, this, and this. The only way the court can decide whether that happened is, is the city, Board of Election Supervisors has to get all that material. Transfer it down to the court, make sure that the full record is there, so that some judge could make a decision based on the entirety of the record. And tha- that process goes, goes along, and once, once the petition is filed. Um, if it's done with a lawyer, the lawyer's gonna know that, that they seek expedited handling, they're probably gonna hand walk it through the building. Uh, and, and make sure that it's done. Each, you know, i- it's not a one-size-fits-all, because we don't know what, what dates are behind it. And obviously, depending on when something happens, uh, the time becomes more critical. On election day, when we're in the midst of an election. And we, and we file something on election day, seeking injunctive relief, I could tell you that there's a whole lot of stuff, it's not pretty. But it g- it gets done, because there are deadlines, and the court recognizes that those deadlines have to be observed. So, it, it requires, it's not just filing something and then just saying, well, I'll let somebody else worry about it.
Thank you, um, sorry, one more question and then a statement, I, I thought of something that Councilmember, um. Cole said, on page twenty-four, under section six dash thirty-six, the penalties for certain prohibited conduct. Uh, the subject to a fine not exceeding one thousand dollars, what is the determination of what? Is given as a fine, I see, there's like a sliding scale, is there some type of? Formulas, I'm sorry, formula that they're go- that they go by, or how do they determine what fee to give individuals?
That is a discretion, uh, exercised by the board. And, you know, if, if I said to you, what's the discretion that they're supposed to use? Somebody was supposed to submit a report by a date certain, and they put, and, and it got there a day late. Somebody else didn't do anything, and so now, six months later, and letters and calls have not been returned. You might say, you know, one is not eh, nearly as serious a violation, and it's understandable, as opposed to some. Uh, someone who has not done what's supposed to be done. Eh, and I think the facts help to speak, to what kind of fine should, should be done, and that's, that's the discretion of the board. It's, you know, it, it, it's like, in, in all cases, you go to court, and there's a fine. The judge says, I, I can't give you more than this, I can, can't, but I'm gonna give you something. And so, the court has that discretion, the board has that discretion, based on the gravity and seriousness of whatever the infraction is.
Thank you, thank you for answering that, um, you know, based on your reply, I would highly recommend, just as a recommendation, that. While we have the ability to make adjustments and changes, that they consider creating some type of schedule of. A range of what they go by, and different offenses, or situations that occur, um, so that is. Not at the discretion, not saying that anyone would do this, but they may have a bad day, and then today, someone gets a thousand dollar fine, right? I think it would be helpful and transparent, um, just to ensure equity across the board, so, thank you again for explaining that. Um, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk, and. For everyone that has worked on this, because I know it was a lot of work, because my eyes were burning last night, as I read them. So, um, one additional thing, I know that you mentioned, Mr. Marcus, the traffic obstructions, and that was one concern that was high on the list. Um, I would also recommend that perhaps we consider, um, looking at different locations, for example. Um, our Robeson Community Center, where eh, eh, I think the traffic can be very tight there, and people tend to frequent there with voting. Um, just looking at some other locations, now that we have other locations that are available for those. Um, that concludes my questions, I see, uh, Councilmember Mills, you have an additional question, and then we were gonna move to the next agenda item as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I just have, um, one, one question, um, just for clarif- clarification for myself. Um, Mr. Marcus, Title VII. Um, is this Title VII referencing, or is it different from Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four?
This Title VII that's here, is the Maryland, uh, the Maryland Rules of Procedure. And what that deals with are administrative appeals, where judicial review is sought.
Okay, so it's for, so it's P- Prince George's County, and not the federal Title VII?
It's, eh, it, it is the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, I would assume that there are no additional questions, I think Councilmember Mills, your hand is up, but. Either it'll come down, or you can push that button again, thank you so much, um, and, um. Do, does the council have any hesitation with adding this, uh, ordinance number two zero three eight to the February tenth virtual regular meeting?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, I think you should, uh, get a clear document first, before you add it to the first public hearing, because you got, got a lot of questions. And you want to get that cleared up, so I think you should continue with this, uh. Work session, until you get the documentation, that you got a final document, you can go forward. To the first public hearing, that way you gotta keep going back and forth with the public hearing, you got. A good document that you can, um, publicly see, and you all kind of agree to that, that document.
Thank you for your recommendation, Mayor Sidnor, are there any additional recommendations or hesitations? Uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, just, just to add to that, I know each member of council has, it's number one, a forty-five pages worth of documents, and I know. I know we got them, you know, six days ago, and each member of council has a number of comments, so it, it. In my opinion, it does seem that there's a little bit more to hammer through, um, I think it's very helpful, to, and bu- whatever process I think allows us to do that. Um, I think would be helpful for the process.
Thank you for your input, I appreciate it, um, we could also consider having an additional work session before the meeting. Um, as well, if that was something you would like to consider, uh, but we will, I have heard, uh, what your recommendations are. And we will follow up, if you could also, as a reminder, please send, um, your questions, concerns. Um, or suggested changes to Madam Clerk, um, the email, that would be great.
And Madam Clerk, one more question before you go, you saw, you say, saying that there's gonna be additional work session on the tenth, at five thirty, to con- continue this. But if, uh, Madam Clerk can know on record, then she can notify the public that it would be another work session for this matter.
Yeah, and if I could, um, Mayor, uh, Madam President, um, we might want to do five. Um, if you want to do an extra work session, because, um, you know, just the amount of time we've been here, I don't. You know, to go back over the changes, I mean, we can see, I guess, once we edit the document with everyone's, uh, suggestions. Um, if, if five or five thirty, but, um, yeah, we would need to know sooner than later, because we would need to advertise, you know, post that it's gonna be a. Especially, you know, a work session.
Let me add something else to why we, why I got the floor, um, it's not a rushed document, you know, we, we, it's an important document, so. We can take a couple of more work sessions before we, uh, go to a public hearing, we know we gotta have it by, done by a certain date. Because it has to be, you know, so right now, it's just February, so we still have time, so a couple more work sessions probably fine. I believe, uh, Madam Clerk can check the date, and let us know what day we have to have it, you know, pleaded, but so. It's not a rushed date, so just, uh, in there's a consensus. You know, you might not, you know, agree to everything, but it's a consensus, what you want to put in the document. So we just have to understand that, you know, that's why, that's a great thing about democracy, everyone has a voice, and then the majority rules. And so, Mr. Marcus and team just advise us, you know, and give us his expert opinion on what we should be, and the way, based on his experience. But it's up to this council, you know, and so, uh. You know, some of the questions you all had, I, I talked to Mr. Marcus, and I had some of the same questions, and he kind of like talked me out the horse as well, made it clear. But it was similar, um, but, so, just, uh, continue to send this stuff to Ms. Green, and. She put a document together, a couple of documents, I guess, I guess, to see which ones you guys want to proceed, to go to the. Public hearing, but it's no rush getting to the public hearing, you know, that's what work sessions are for. You know, um, this is usually always a long work session, because of voting, election, things of nature, but. You know, um, yeah, that's how I would add that piece, thank you, and one more thing, Mr. Mills, about the Board of Appeals, uh. Board of Appeals not just for, um, Board of Elections, this is of everything, for planning commissioners, so we would never eliminate that. But you know, if this, if we want to take the Board of Appeal process out of this document, we can, but we wouldn't get rid of the Board of Appeals totally.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, for your, um, input, Madam Clerk, uh, what would your recommendation be for the council?
Um, I think that, eh, well, I, you know, I just thought of something too, we'll have to check with Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson's schedule, um. For the work session, so that they can be available, um, as well, um, so we would. Probably need to make a, a decision offline about an exact date, once I can get with them about their calendars.
Okay, sounds, thank you so much, so what we'll do is hold off on this and follow up. Um, is what it sounds like from the input and the recommendations provided, um, and follow up regarding, uh, next work session date.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, moving to, uh, agenda item number four, is Charter Resolution number one eighty-one. And I will be reading this in it, in its entirety, a charter resolution of the mayor and city council. Of, um, sorry, a charter resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending. Rearranging and renumbering Article six hundred, registrations and elections. Section six dash zero one, voters and registration, section six da- six zero two. Um, six zero two, election of mayor and council members, section six zero three, ward boundaries, section six zero four. Polling places, section six zero five, voting procedures, section six zero six. Same-day registration, section six zero seven, vote by mail ballots, section six zero eight. Electioneering, section six zero nine, election equipment and sample ballots. Section six ten, compliance with eligibility, requirements, attendance, recall, disqualification and suspension of elected officials. Section six eleven, recall of elected official, section six twelve, grounds for recall of elected official. Section six thirteen, suspension of elected officials, section six fourteen, referenda. Section six fifteen, advisory referenda, section six sixteen, adoption and incorporation of state law provisions. Section six seventeen, extraordinary powers, civil emergency. Uh, Madam Clerk, Sarah Green, Mr. Bruce Marcus, Attorney for the Board of Election Supervisors, and Ms. Sidney Patterson, you now have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam President, um, as, as I sort of indicated to, um. All of you, the big work was, uh, part of the ordinance, the charter itself really. Uh, it has been, uh, changed mostly for stylistic of issues and straightening out language and the like. Uh, uh, there are a few things, I, I'm not gonna take a, a, a lot of time here, because a lot of it was just rewording things. Over the period of time that the, that the, uh, charter had been in existence, there were different iterations of the same. Provisions that were put in different places, and start off at page two, and, uh, section six oh two, A. And then B really said the same thing, so, eh, in order not to have it be duplicative. Uh, that, wha- what happened was, you just simply take out the stuff that's been repeated. Uh, because it, it becomes confusing and difficult to understand, so, o- one example of a change would have been to streamline the language. Uh, if you, if you go down to page four. Same-day registration, eh, eh, and obviously, all of you recognize that this was a major change, this is a, this is a. Serious major change in the way that, that elections are being held, where you have same-day registration. So, eh, somebody taking a look at this thing for the first time says, well, you took, you took out same-day registration at six oh six. Don't worry, if you go a few pages behind that, um, you'll see it, it's six oh nine. Same-day registration, so, um, it's, it's just a realignment there. Eh, no- nothing substantive, uh, even though it looks like a substantial part of, uh, the text was removed. Under six oh six, vote by mail, these are, um, just the particulars. Having to do with how vote by mail is to be done, as I said to you earlier, uh, in the presentation. Absentee ballots is what we used to call this, but, but we now call it, um. Vote by mail, and we, we accomplish the same thing using a, a, a slightly different form, but. The purpose is the same, we don't go through the, the two-step process of absentee ballots, where you had to request it, then you had to make sure that. Person was eligible for it, then it got sent back, so the vote by mail has been streamlined significantly. The changes that are added, you'll see, for the most part, relate to the removal of the word absentee, and the insertion of vote by mail as a phrase. Um, if, if you go to, um. Six oh eight, uh, we- we've changed the, the title. For section six oh eight to provisional ballots, as opposed to making it a subsection. Uh, of another, uh, of an earlier, uh, portion of it, just simply restyling. Uh, the language, and then, the, the language for the provisional ballot comes out. Uh, the way that provisional ballots are issued, uh, by other, uh, election boards. And we use the same kind of language to make sure that we're consistent in what we're doing. Now, one of the things that I, I, we didn't talk about yet, we will, on the next page, same-day registration. Obviously, one of the problems that we have with same-day registration, where we are relying on the Prince George's County voter lists. It's, w- we're not gonna get a voter list out of Prince George's County in the same-day registration. So, th- there is, uh, there is the potential here for there to, to be a problem. We try to manage it as best we can, but the alternative is, if you don't have somebody who's got a same-day registration. At Prince George's County, y- you've basically said to any voter in the city of Laurel, you can't vote same day. And that, obviously, is not what the, what the goal or the objective of this is, so, there are some adaptations that are contained. On page six and seven, recognizing the same-day registration is not the same voter source, as would be the case. For Prince George's County voter registration. Uh, if we go to electioneering, uh, which is on page nine. That we added language there, which confirms what I had said to you earlier, having to do with the role. Uh, the omniscient role of your election, uh, Board of Election Supervisors, and your election judges. Uh, and the authority that they have. Uh, there are some changes to sort of refine. Recall of elected officials, uh, and there is nothing substantive here, you know, the, the notion here. Uh, is that you have the ability to recall, uh, a, a city council member. The process is, is described, it has been refined and reworded, but substantively, it is. Uh, the, the same as what we've had, uh, before, and that is that there is a process. For a council member to be recalled, uh, anyone has any doubt about whether this is a necessary. Part of the process, need only go back earlier this week, when the DC Council, uh, exercised its right of recall. With respect to one of its members, and so, the, the process is unfortunate, uh, it's somewhat cumbersome. But there has to be a procedure, uh, through which to remove, uh, a, a member of the council, should the need arise. With respect to the, the balance of these things, when you take a look at it, you're, what you're really looking at is wordsmithing. Uh, some changes, but nothing of any substance, a- and that's because the charter, you know, in, in, in the scheme of things, that charter is really. The Bible, if you will, the interpretation of the Bible is, is, and the, and the expansion of how it's to be done. Comes in the way of the ordinance, and then the last thing I would leave you with is this, that, um, as part of the work that we did, uh. with Ms. Green, it was a recognition that a further way to make the process more transparent would be to adopt kind of a similar process uh, as is done by the state, and that is to have regulations. Not, not the ordinance and not the charter, but regulations, which are the mechanics of how it is that the board goes about doing its job, so that there's a, you know, a handbook, if you will, recipe book describing the processes and procedures. And so, once this process is over, uh, the expectation is, is that we'll go back and have some regulations which are more the day-to-day directives on how it is the election will be administered. And unless anybody has anything more they'd like to discuss or questions about what is contained in the, in the proposed charter revisions, um, there's nothing more that we really have to present to you.
Thank you so much. Um, I see that the council has questions. Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Yes, I thank you again, and, um, it was helpful to sort of go through the document. I, I did want to maybe just hit on a couple of things quickly, and again, I'll submit some additional stuff, uh, to the clerk or for further review as we hash through everything. I, I did want to point out, I know you mentioned in Section Six Oh Two A, that strike was sort of duplicative, but just to reemphasize, that's the only place where it ever explicitly says, to my reading, that the mayor and the at-large council member need to be residents of Laurel. So again, just something to consider further. Um, the question I did have, I noticed throughout the document, there was sort of a striking of the word qualified from the term qualified voter. I'm assuming that's primarily to reflect sort of modern nomenclature, and there's no legal distinction being made there. Is that true?
It, it basically is duplicative, or qualify, if you're a voter, you're qualified. You wouldn't be able to, you were qualified.
Yeah, so it's, it's not actually making a distinction, it's just a simplified language. Okay, good. I, I suspect that was the case, I just wanted to confirm. Um, in Section, uh, Six Oh Five, Paragraph Two A, it was talking about, uh, early voting. And, um, it mentions that the DC Council or the Board may provide from uh, one or more early voting days, uh, but then it says that the resolution basically needs to come from the council, and so I wasn't sure if, um, I'm assuming the Board wouldn't do that unilaterally, i- was there a reason to insert that in there? Um, mention of the Board with the early voting days or what that is intended to describe?
Uh, not really, there, there was a location that was cited in the original. The, the catch-all there, I think, is why there was not great concern about the detail, because the last portion of that sentence says any other location determined in the resolution.
Gotcha, yeah, okay, so it is, it's down to the resolution of the council to set the early voting days, is what it translates to, okay. Um, Section, uh, Six Oh Six, Paragraph D, um, skip forward here, uh, I think this was, yeah, talking about somebody who, um, was it, uh, vote by mail, but basically, if they wanted to have their ballot delivered, they have to have a duly authorized agent who then also has to have a form signed, uh, and it, uh, there might be some good reasons, and I was just hoping to understand a little further what, what that gets to, where there's, I'm assuming it's trying to stem some abuses. But, um, maybe you're able to advise what that is.
I think that's consistent with the state law and, um, the, the other, the other part about it is that this really is a security issue. Um, you know, someday over, over, um, adult beverages, I, I can regale you with, uh, people who were in nursing homes and voting and things like that, and how that came to be, and, you know, the stories that sort of follow. The, the whole idea here is just to try to have as much control over someone who's an intermediary as possible.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And yes, after reading these documents, I definitely adult beverages sound in order, so I'm with you on that. Rich, uh, we, maybe later tonight here, um, Section Six Oh Seven, the, uh, which was the write-in ballots, and, uh, to me, uh, the way it was written, it says the, um, you know, in all elections, a voter may cast a ballot by writing in the name of a candidate, um, provided that the ballot allegedly identifies a candidate who meets and has satisfied all the qualifications of public office. And I didn't know, does that translate into you can only write in a candidate who's already on the ballot itself?
No, um, qualifications would be, so li- li- this is like, sort of lore. Mickey Mouse gets votes in every election.
Right.
Donald Duck gets, oh, you know, votes in every election. So the, the fact that, that people register their, their protest
Yeah.
By picking, you, you could pick whatever name.
Person, yeah, okay.
The, the problem with that is, is you, you can write in anybody you want, but in order for the vote to be accepted, it, it has to be someone who has obviously credentials that would qualify that person to be.
Okay, that makes sense. I can almost see a municipality somewhere sort of voting Mickey Mouse with the plurality and, uh, and being able to say, what do we do now? Okay, that, that helps clear that up.
We've had some funny, uh, write-ins, Donald Duck, Mickey Mouse.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, all kinds of things that I've seen in past elections and, yeah.
I, I figured there was a reason, but that helps clear it up, thank you.
This is saying, they, if they, if that person, let's say, per, some way gets enough votes, uh, they have to meet all the requirements all of the candidates had to meet, so they can't usurp the
Skip the process. Yeah, okay, that makes sense, thank you, that, that's helpful. Just, uh, I'm just going to skip through a couple things and leave the rest. One actually was a, a question that a resident had reached out to me, um, and I, I would, I let her know that I would ask it during our session tonight. Um, Section Six Dash Four, excuse me, Six Fourteen, um, in terms of, uh, justification for the recall of elected o- office, and it came down to conviction of criminal offense, and, um, the question was, was that, you know, during our prior, or, you know, is there a preclusion for somebody who has been convicted from even being a candidate? Um, or is, and how that relates to what may happen in office as well?
It, the, the question of eligibility for a prior conviction would be recognized at the time that the certificate of candidacy was issued. Uh, when it talks about grounds, once that person's qualified, you know, unless, unless it, and I'll give you, I'll give you the example, uh, George Santos, okay? Uh, so i- if there's a situation where someone has either misrepresented credentials, misrepresented, uh, eligibility, then that's a different story. But this is usually referred to as something that took place during the course.
While in office, right. And, and as written, I don't think that is not a, not an eligibility requirement as, as drafted in the current language. Would that, that be correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, that, that just lets me be able to answer your question. Um, I'm gonna skip one of these and just go to my last one here, uh, Section Six Fifteen. And, um, which relates to, um, if somebody's found guilty of a crime, um, they sort of are removed, but then they can have that removal reversed, um, or if vice versa. And I, it, it raised a question in my mind, if somebody was removed, how they could be reinstated, if maybe their office had been filled in the interim. Uh, you know, if there had been a delay between the point at which they were removed versus later, they were, it was overturned, their conviction, for instance.
And so the, the, there's a distinction between either removal uh, or, or debarment or something like that and suspension. So the, this particular s- section speaks to a suspension, which is not essentially you know, permanent, it, it, it is for a period of time.
Got you.
If there are intervening acts that take place before the person is stripped uh, of office, then that's a different story. You, you could be suspended for, you know, an indefinite period of time. Uh, but you, you still have the entitlement to that office, whoever it is is acting.
Thank you, and that helps clarify that, I appreciate it. And again, I'll send some smaller stuff, uh, after the fact, but I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I yield the floor. Thank you, President, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions? From the council? Okay, um, very, very quiet, very, it has me concerned, no kidding. Um, okay, so for myself, I did have, um, a question about the same-day registration. Just to confirm, this is for the candidate or this is in general for everyone that i- is a voter?
Voter.
Okay, thank you. Before I made my recommendation or to share my thoughts, um, I wanted to just reconfirm that as an election judge, I have seen where people, especially young people, are encouraged, um, to vote or to come with someone while they vote, they then try to sign up that same day. Um, we've clapped and celebrated them as they took their first step, um, into doing things like that. I would really not want us to for it to seem like there's voter suppression, um, and to keep that as open as possible, and especially, um, when they come with their relatives or their parents to try to come and vote. So that, that will definitely be one of my recommendations regarding the same-day, uh, registration. Um, in addition to that, uh, Section Six Thirteen, Page Eleven Two A, was this portion pulled from a, a current charter, or is it being recommended to be added?
Which?
Which?
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, no problem, I'm, because I'm fumbling through the papers. So Section Six Dash One Three, I'm sorry, oh, maybe I, maybe I, no, no, I'm right. So Six One Three, I think I, I said dash because it went through the eleven. Um, Six Thirteen, I believe, eleven. Let me see, Two A. Um, petition, recall of the ward elected city council member. Uh, so I'm assuming this is to, um, the recommendation to be added with the underlying portion?
Yes. And if, and if you, if I recall correctly, the first portion is as to the mayor and at-large, and the second one is to a city council member. Same thing.
Yeah, because the mayor and the, uh, at-large are, um, voted citywide. Um, and uh, ward council members are only voted for by the voters in that ward.
Okay, um.
We didn't have a mechanism, we didn't have a mechanism, uh, before.
Okay. I, well, I asked that because I remember, um, a resident mentioning to me that, um, this was something that they were recom, they saw in our charter. And so I wasn't sure if it was pulled from it, I couldn't find it.
I- if, if you take a look at the, uh, language for mayor and at-large, and I, I can tell you, sitting here, I don't, I, I don't remember whether we, we did it a, a verbatim side by side, but the concept is that they should be the same.
Okay. All right, thank you so much for answering that. Um, also for Section Six One Six on page thirteen, um, the section that says, I'm just looking at my notes that I wrote. The section that says attesting on the basis of personal knowledge.
Yes.
Um, I would recommend, uh, that we adjust that to be actual proof, not just knowledge or belief. I think it mentioned belief.
Well, it, so it, it, what came out was, um, the language that was removed, person's own pers, a person's own personal knowledge, which is really sort of uh, difficult language. There are different kinds of attestations. Personal knowledge, information and belief is different, because that's not personal knowledge, that you could have gotten information to a variety of people. And, um, that's where the personal knowledge comes in. Uh, and you have best of knowledge, best of the affianced knowledge, information and belief in some parts. So that could be more expansive, but personal knowledge is like really, that, that's probably the highest standard you're gonna get. I saw it, I know it, I was there, kind of thing.
Okay, is that, I don't remember if there were definitions placed in the front, is that something that also has a definition as well?
No, because, um, th- th- this is sort of, I don't want to belittle it, but it's, it's sort of wordplay for lawyers uh, as to what kind of attestation you might have. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, well, to the best of my knowledge could be based on what? What, you know, what, what's the knowledge base? Uh, ba- my knowledge could be zero. Uh, my, my belief could be from, you know, talking to somebody on a street corner. My personal knowledge would theoretically assume things that I personally observed and I know personally.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to understand the transparency of the standard based on that personal knowledge statement, that would, would, would it be at the discretion again?
You, you, it, it, unfortunately, wha- what we're looking at here is something that applies across the board in, in courts, statutes and laws. And it's not one of those things that's really capable of being defined in a different way, because there are just so many different ways you could do it. That if you tried to get it, you know, by being more specific, it actually winds up uh, becoming more difficult to apply, so in- information, knowledge and belief, personal knowledge being the highest standard.
Thank you, thank you for answering that, I appreciate it. That, that's all of my questions and comments. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Just to confirm. I don't see any. Um, all right, so, um, is there any hesitation with adding Charter Resolution Number One Eighty-One to the February tenth virtual regular meeting? Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would recommend, because it related, it be handled in the same manner we are for the, for the ordinance.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Councilmember Sim, I'm sorry, Mills?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. So what we will do is follow up regarding, uh, an additional work session for that, for res- Charter Resolution Number One Eighty-One as well. Thank you for your input, thank you also for your time. Um, Mr. Marcus and also Ms. Patterson and Madam Clerk as well. Thank you for your time working on this. Um, based on the fact that I don't believe, and if you can please confirm, Madam Clerk, that we will not need to, to cover agenda number, item number five, because there were no legal questions that were a- app requested?
That's correct, Madam President, we don't need to go into closed session.
Thank you. Um, so with that being said, um, thank you again, everyone, for your work on this and your discussion and providing your input, uh, taking the time to read over this, it was a lot, but it's necessary and important. So with no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is now adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.